Okay, welcome to the September Orange Board of Selectmen meeting. And there is also a public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance change or something that Attorney Moreno is going to discuss regarding the smoking, the prohibiting of smoking of tobacco products, which I believe the town already has, and the smoking and consumption of cannabis products on properties owned or under the control of the town of Orange. That will be our first item after we go through the initial starts. So in this room, it's much easier in the event of an emergency. Everybody just runs for that back door, or you run for that door. There's no stairways to worry about, no walls with clocks on them or anything like that, but those are your emergency exits. Introductions, I'll do that first. I'm going to start down the far end with Selectmen Novicki.
Good evening, Margaret Novicki.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Good evening, Ralph Holkenquist.
Mr. Moreno, Town Attorney.
Good evening, John Carangelo.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
And the Secretary to the Board.
Thank you. And with that, please rise for the pledge. The flag is located on this side tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing?
Some.
Wow, slow down. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing. I will turn to Ann to read the call on the public hearing.
Town of Orange Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given to the residents and taxpayers of the town of Orange that in accordance with Section 3.4 of the Charter of the Town of Orange, that the Orange Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the CAF of the High Plains Community Center, 525 Orange Center Road, at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 8th, 2021, on the proposed set forth below to consider an act on the adoption of a resolution establishing an ordinance prohibiting the smoking of tobacco products and the smoking and consumption of cannabis products on all property owned by or under the control of the town of Orange and the smoking of cannabis products in the outdoor sections of restaurants within the town. At the hearing, the Board of Selectmen will take public comment. Orange residents and taxpayers may email comments to jayzealy@orange-ct.gov until 4:00 PM on September 8th, 2021, or may attend the meeting in person to express their views. Dated at Orange, Connecticut, this 25th day of August, 2021, Town of Orange Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the call on this. I will ask first, before the Board starts deliberations on this or Attorney Moreno, is there anybody in the room who would like to speak on this topic at this time? This is on the ordinance regarding cannabis. Is there anybody in the room for this ordinance at this time? Okay, I see nobody at this time. If somebody else comes in later, I probably will ask the same question again. With that, I'm going to defer to Attorney Moreno, which has provided a document to the Selectmen tonight with some possibility for this change.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. We're here tonight for a public hearing on whether or not the town should adopt an ordinance regulating the consumption of cannabis on public property and property under the control of the town. As most of you should know, in June of this year, the governor signed into law Senate Bill 1201, which legalized cannabis in the state of Connecticut. What Senate Bill 1201 also does is allows municipalities to control the consumption and smoking of cannabis and cannabis products on public property and property under the control of the town. So each town can do one of a number of things. Can do nothing, can adopt an ordinance that restricts the consumption and smoking of cannabis and cannabis products on all public property or on specific public property, depending upon what direction you want to go in. So what I had originally done is drafted a proposed ordinance that stretched the bounds of what Senate Bill 1201 allowed a municipality to do. So I, for example, defined public property under the control of the town as being all property, including sidewalks, rights of way, public streets, fields, schools, town halls, et cetera, et cetera. I made it as broad as possible. That functionally means that no one would be allowed to smoke outside of private property. Now, and I'll tell you, I've been dealing with this issue in multiple communities in the region, and it's being met with different responses. And one of the concerns is overreaching. You know, do you feel that you need to regulate the consumption of a product on a public street? So if I'm walking down the street and I want to go to my neighbors, you're going to tell me I cannot smoke on that public street if you adopt the ordinance as I presented. And again, this is a policy issue that you need to deliberate and come to an opinion on. But as I was going through my several communities I represent, I looked back at our town code and I said, instead of overcomplicating the issue with a brand-new ordinance, if we look back at Chapter 307, and I handed you all a copy of a proposed draft that I've put on the table, what I did is I took the fundamental parts of the ordinance that I had provided to you last month, and I incorporated them into the existing ordinance, 307, which is the use of public property. I added some definitions. I added definitions for cannabis, cannabis products, electronic delivery systems. I added tobacco products and vapor products, and I expanded the definition of public area to include not only public property but land under the control of the town, which is exactly what Senate Bill 1201 authorizes the municipality to do. I then thought of cannabis as I think of alcohol. You know, we do regulate the consumption of alcohol on public property, and cannabis is no different than alcohol for purposes of it's now a legal substance that a person of the age of 21 or older can consume. So what do we do with alcohol? We prohibit it on public property except by, unless it's by permit. Now, it's not, I'm here to give advice, I'm not here to make decisions. That's for you to decide from a policy standpoint, but I separated cannabis out because I didn't think you'd want to have the chief have the ability to grant a permit for the consumption of cannabis on public property. And quite frankly, I spoke with the chief, and he didn't want to have that authority either. So what I did is, under Section 307-2, I proposed to modify it, as shown on Page 2, where the new paragraph A is the existing Section 307-2, which talks about alcohol. I left that alone, and it's verbatim identical to the way it's always been. I added a subsection B that provides that, you know, "Except as permitted herein, no person shall be under the influence of drugs and/or alcohol, or possess, drink, smoke, burn, light, consume, or use at any time cigarettes, cigars, pipes, or similar devices whether containing wholly or in part tobacco and/or cannabis, including but not limited to electronic delivery systems or vapor products containing tobacco and/or cannabis, or illegal drugs and non-prescribed controlled substances upon or within the limits of any public area or parking area within the town of Orange." So that is functionally identically the way we handle alcohol. So if you look at paragraph A above, you know, you can basically take out the alcoholic liquor and substitute the words tobacco, cannabis, illegal drugs, non-prescribed controlled substances, and it says the same thing. So it shouldn't be shocking to anyone, hopefully. But I think by keeping the restriction combined with alcohol, we're avoiding the need of creating a separate ordinance. I think it works perfectly here because this is an ordinance that discusses the use of public property, and that's really what we're doing. I did expand the scope of public property, so you have to decide whether or not you want to keep that expansion, you know, land under the control of the town. Land under the control of the town might be land that, or property that you lease one day. So it's not property you own, but it's property under your control. You know, you may want to also be careful. Now, I'm interpreting this, but if you want to make it clearer, you know, we're in the process of purchasing the Race for Country Club. That's going to remain a private country club. And, you know, we might want to carve an exception out if it's property, public property, under the control of a third party, because it's their use, it's not our use, because it's an exclusive use that they're getting. That's, again, something, the way I wrote this, I think that they're already excluded, but if you want to make that clearer, we can add language to that point. But I'm happy to take any questions or any concerns, but yes, this is a public hearing. We came into the public hearing with a specific proposed ordinance. We're coming out of the public hearing with something that is different but functionally the same as what the first ordinance I proposed. So yes, you can, if you want, close your public hearing, deliberate amongst yourselves, and take action on the amended Chapter 307.
All right. So what people need to remember both here and at home and at this table is that, yes, there are people who smoke and drink at different times and different events on the town, properties that vary around our, that we own, but those are already a limited function. So you're adding to it essentially, Vin is doing a comparison, tying it to, but they already exist. So what you're really adding to it is cannabis at this time, is what it comes down to. So I-
If I can add one other thing, you know, that Senate Bill 1201 is a very elaborately-written law that if you don't read the whole thing, you'll miss everything. And, you know, one of the parts of the ordinance that I proposed was that we were restricting the consumption of and smoking of cannabis in the outdoor sections of restaurants, which is your right under the law. However, if you read other parts of Senate Bill 1201, the law now provides that you cannot smoke anything within 25 feet of an opening of any building in the state of Connecticut, any air ventilation system, or any window. So functionally, every building in the state of Connecticut has a 25-foot barrier within which you cannot smoke anything.
Is that new, or is that-
That's in Senate Bill 1201, which became effective on July 1st. So functionally, you're not going to be able to smoke in the outdoor sections of restaurants under the existing law anyway, so I don't think the municipality needs to take action on that. And that's why I kind of left that out.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up, and I'm going to start well, let me start, we'll go down the line. No, I'm going to open it up to us first. I'm going to start with Margaret. If Margaret has any questions first, I'm going to go down the line with thoughts and questions.
I don't have questions. I think what Mr. Moreno did by incorporating this into an existing, is this a statute?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. I think makes perfect sense, and I support it.
Okay, Mitchell?
There you go. Okay. I agree with Margaret, but I do have a couple of questions for Vin.
Page and paragraph when you do it.
Well, first, I want to do the last thing he discussed concerning the outdoor restaurants. Is it possible, because we did advertise that we'd be banning smoking of cannabis products in outdoor sections of restaurants, is it possible that an outdoor section of restaurant can be more than 25 feet from the entrance and therefore allowable? Because if that's the case, I'd rather have it in here that it's not allowed in any outdoor seating area of a restaurant.
And let me just dial you back a little bit. What you published was that there would be an ordinance discussing the banning of consumption of cannabis products in the outdoor section of restaurants. Didn't say you were doing it. So, you know, again, ultimately, you were not bound to adopt any ordinance at all. You were just bound to conduct a public hearing to give the public the opportunity to weigh in, and you put the public on notice of what you would be considering.
Right. But I understand that part. My concern is the fact that because the original ordinance that we were putting forward mentioned the outdoor restaurants-
Oh, can I get your microphone, please? Sorry. You have to-
Ralph, automatically. Who's got the button?
Sorry about that, Mitch.
So the issue I have is the fact, the original ordinance that was published did mention banning smoking of all types in outdoor sections of restaurants. My understanding of the new law, as you mentioned, yes, it does specifically say no more than 25 feet from any entranceway, but you could conceivably have an outdoor section of a restaurant that's more than 25 feet of the entranceway, therefore having a smoking and nonsmoking section in an outdoor section of a restaurant, which I personally would say we shouldn't have any smoking at all in any outdoor section. So I'd rather see, I appreciate what you've done, I'd like to see in addition to what you've done to add that concept. The second question I have, Vin, is under the original ordinance that was published with us, it mentioned that generally limits possession to 1.5 ounces of cannabis plant material and 5 ounces of such material in a locked container, et cetera, et cetera. Basically, the ordinance you put forward says be under the influence, et cetera, et cetera, or possess. So my concern is that the way the ordinance is now written, you can't possess cigarettes or cannabis on your person, even if you're not consuming it, on public property. I think that's got some overreach, the word you used.
Well, and again, this is a deliberation for you all to make a decision. The law in the state of Connecticut is that, yes, I am allowed now to possess cannabis up to a certain limit, anywhere in the state, except where it's prohibited. The law allows a municipality to prohibit the consumption and use of cannabis, cannabis products on public property. So you can prohibit the possession of it on public property. That's your statutory right. The legislature extended that to you. If you feel that's overreaching, then, again, what's before you is a draft, it's for you to tell me what you wanted to read at the end of the day. I heard outdoor restaurants, and I hear maybe possession is overreaching, you know, you can deliberate that amongst yourselves.
To hear from others on the board on those couple of issues, but thank you for that clarification.
Ralph?
Well, I think our counsel did a good job writing this up, but I think that if we're going to limit to 25 feet, the nonsmoking or use of cannabis or liquor, I think we don't, we should go either beyond the limit or not have a limit, because you could have 50 people in the outdoor section, 25 feet in, 25 feet out, and who's, I don't know who's going to stop that, or, you know, who's going to measure all the time. So I think we either should put it in all or not at all.
John?
I don't have, I mean, I agree with the board members. I mean, Vinnie did a great job at explaining the ordinance, explaining what his thought process was behind his draft. To be very candid with you, I don't have any issues with cannabis or smoking, but it should be done in your own privacy of your own home. Very similar to tobacco smoking. You know, people don't do that in public areas. People shouldn't be around someone who wants to blow smoke in your face. It's unfair to those people. But having said that, what I am concerned about is something that Mitch touched upon, and that is whether we are overreaching here. I am very concerned about how this ordinance will be enforced. I'm very concerned about somebody who is 21 years of age, who legally can possess alcohol and/or cannabis, that may have that in his or her possession legally, and so I am concerned about the potentiality of overreaching. So my question back to Attorney Moreno would be, what if we do nothing? If you could explain to the layperson out there what that simply means, I think that would help a lot of people understand this board's decision as we go forward. So I'd appreciate it.
Sure. And as I was explaining to the zoning commission, who are meeting up the road and deliberating what to do with allowing cannabis establishments within the town, there's a number of different things you can do. You can do nothing. And if you do nothing, what does that mean? That means when it comes to public property and property under the control of the town of Orange, this town has decided not to regulate this issue on its property, which means that whatever the law of the state of Connecticut allows, that's what it would be allowed on public property. So, for example, the 25-foot rule would apply around this building. But during the country fair, if I wanted to light up a joint and walk across the fairgrounds, I'm within my rights to do that, because you have not prohibited it, right? And it's legal for me to do it. The same way it would be legal for me, at this point, to smoke a cigarette if I wanted to, because there's no ordinance that bans that at this moment in time. So I could go down to my son's baseball game on Saturday and help me get through the game, and, you know, again, I'm going to light up another joint, all right? And, you know, and I could be, so now around children and athletic activities, consuming cannabis or cannabis products. Now, understand, in today's day and age, it's not like it used to be where we're all going to roll a joint and get high. We may eat a brownie. And the point is that when you consume an intoxicating substance, whether it be alcohol, whether it be cannabis, whether it be controlled substances, or non-prescribed controlled substances, it impairs an individual's judgment. And when you're on public property with impaired judgment, you run the risk of causing injury to the general public health, safety, and welfare. And so that is the general concern, is to say, we don't want to infringe on an individual's right. You have the absolute right to do what the law allows on your own property, but you have to decide when it comes to public property whether or not there needs to be, as the town has done with alcohol many years ago, I think in 1984, restrictions put, or limitations put on the use of this product. And, you know, and again, so if you do nothing, my example stands, you could take this ordinance and you could dial it back, meaning that you could strike from the, I added, or land under the control of the town. Now, fundamentally, I don't think that adds anything here, because I don't think we lease any property, we own it all. But you could narrow the scope, right? You could say the fairgrounds, schools, and playgrounds and sports fields. But, you know, public rights of way, so we can narrow the scope if you'd like to do that. We could omit certain things like pipes and cigars of tobacco products. You know, like if a bunch of people are going around or having a barbecue in the back at the pavilion, and they sit around and they have some cigars, you know, which is something that you don't do every day, but you do more in a social setting, is that something you want to prohibit or not? Some people would say absolutely, other people would say, you know, no, you know, I want to be able to have my cigar with my friends. So those are the types of things that you need to decide. We can fashion this any way you think is appropriate to manage the issue within the town.
But one step further, Vinny. One step further. So let's say we adopt this ordinance, don't change anything. How is anybody really going to enforce it?
The same way we do with alcohol.
Okay. So, I mean, let's be very candid, right? So when we have these wonderful musical concerts out here, there's people who are over 21 years of age, and they're indulging with alcohol and cigars and cigarettes and pipes, and I assume probably some cannabis, okay? That's been done for as long as I know, and unfortunately, I'm now older, which really is sad to say.
Not older, old.
Thank you, buddy. So I guess I'm just, and again, it's just my own thought process here, it's just, okay, so how is our police force going to be able to enforce this? They're going to go to blanket to blanket? I mean, or is it going to be a situation where one person's on a blanket who doesn't want to listen to anybody, and you've got to send the chief over there to? I mean, it's, to me, it seems like it's going to be very difficult to actually enforce.
And think of it this way, John, and I agree with you completely. Now, first of all, I will say, when it comes to town events, the chief and I are very diligent in, I pull a permit in the name of the town, and the chief issues it. So when we have the fireworks, you're all thinking you're violating the ordinance by sneaking your alcohol around, but you're actually allowed to do it because we pulled a permit, okay? But we appreciate the discretion, okay? And that's why we don't tell you we pull a permit, because we like discretion. So, but think of it this way, where when you have an issue, like, for example, at the Little League game, and someone is being offensive and, you know, as, look, I was in the first selectwoman from Bethany's here, we had a very vocal and lively town meeting over this subject, and the consensus was, well, why can't we all be good neighbors? And, sir, would you put out your joint? And when I say no, when I say no, and now the conversation becomes elevated, there's no enforcement ability. So this is not, this is really not an ordinance to say, if there's a group of people on the fairgrounds and they're doing something, they're sneaking alcohol and, you know, doing a discretionary, or they're consuming cannabis and they're not creating an issue, I suspect we're not going to have a problem. But if there is an altercation that arises where we want to say no for some good reason, this ordinance would give you the flexibility of saying no, right? And, you know, and that's, because unfortunately, it's not human nature to engage in good behavior. And if you say, sorry, but what you're doing is offending me, more often than not, you're going to be offended by me saying that, you know? And then we're going to get red-faced, and we're going to, you know, end up calling the police. And the police are either going to say, sir, you're not allowed to consume cannabis on this property, or, you know, it's legal in the state of Connecticut.
It gives a backup. It gives little teeth when needed to back up a situation.
No, I think that's great for the public to hear that, Vinny, because at the end of the day, joining forces, at the end of the day, I think people want to know, what if we don't do anything? I mean, why waste more time on this? Should we adopt it? Should we not? So I think your explanation is very helpful to everybody, so thank you for that.
It gives teeth in the situation when they need to have that rule for a specific problem. It isn't enforcing it just occasionally, but it's there as needed. Judy?
Okay. The enforcement, I think, is key. I know the actual, the state is looking at, again, how do you enforce a traffic violation? Do you pull him over because he smoked a joint, or because he's had a beer, or whatever? So they're, I know they're struggling with how do you delineate what's what, and then what's the correct, you know, punishment for it? So yes, that's a tough one. Possession on public property, I do think that is a difficult one, as you're talking, Mitch. I mean, we're not going to have people walk up and, I mean, it would be nice if they'd lock it in their car and stuff before they did participate on some public activity on public property. But again, there's that enforcement rule. Is someone going to go around and, you know, have everybody pat down and say, whoops, you got a joint, out of here? So that is something that I think would be overreaching. I think we're just going to have to look the other way on something like that. And my other question is restaurants. Do restaurants, do they have their own ability of saying to people, no smoking on our premises?
Yes.
So I think most of them do. I can't imagine, I don't know any restaurant in town, I mean, I'm even thinking some of the local bars, if people want to smoke, they go out to the sidewalk area, but they're outside the building, you know, the facility. So I think that's something that we probably don't have to be so concerned about, because I think the restaurants are handling that.
Correct.
So that would be, you know, my thought. But I agree, we need a backup, because you don't want that person in your face and saying, so what are you going to do about it? You know? And if we say, well, we have a little ordinance here, and it says that you can't do that, so we can tell you to leave. So I think we need that someplace.
Teeth.
Teeth. We need teeth.
Okay. I think all of you have had some excellent input on this. Okay, uh, I think all of you have had some excellent input on this. I agree that it needs to be teeth for all town properties. I think that that is what we do control. I think it's just following in suit with, uh, what we already have in place, it's just another addition to it. It's an interesting situation from many fronts that, uh, some people enjoy it, some people can't stand the odor of it if they're near it. Some people, for health issues, smoke it. Um, that it has proven to give some people relief and all, so you need to take that into consideration. Um, there's a, there's a, it's a whole mix of problems that go with it. And ultimately, the state of Connecticut has approved it, yet federally, it's still illegal. So, that means if you go to any courthouse or the post office, uh, those are all federal properties, could be a problem, quite honestly, as silly as that seems. But, um, the state of Connecticut has passed this, uh, to each municipality in the state of Connecticut to address, so I think that it is appropriate that we address it and add it to what already exists, uh, for the town properties. Um, I think, quite honestly, that restaurant, I think, to the best of my knowledge, most of the restaurants around here, in their outdoor dining areas, have, uh, either limited or not at all allowed smoking in those areas. And I think that if they, people, if they received a complaint, you know, the table next to them was smoking and it was extremely offensive, I think the restaurant would then, they may not be able to do anything right at that very moment, but I'll bet you before they open the next day or two, they would address the situation, um, publicly. There's an interesting twist to this, and while we're on this, it's part of this, but it's not part of this. So for those at home and here in the audience, Attorney Marino said that the zoning commission is also having a hearing tonight regarding, uh, huh?
It's only a meeting, it's not, it's not.
It's not their meeting?
It's, yeah, then, they're not at public hearing yet.
Okay. About allowing a cannabis retail outlet in the town of Orange. That is a separate piece, completely from what we're discussing here tonight. And, um, by the law, and I think I'm pretty close on it, and I got enough people here that'll correct me if I'm wrong, um, the state allows a community to have one retail facility of a, for a community if you have 25,000 or less population, which Orange is not under 14,000 population.
By a little bit.
Um, but if you're a city where you have more than 25,000, they may have multiple retail outlets. And there's a piece to that that some were chattering about publicly and Facebooking and all, that, well, the town will get a 3% cut from the sales tax of the, that's generated from the state. And so CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, which Mitch and I both get the newsletter for, did a, had a very good, uh, detailed expla- explanation on it, uh, that, uh, I think, and you sent it out to our board, I believe, right? And then zoning got it. Uh, but what it requires is, the Department of Revenue Services is not going to be sending each town a check quarterly based on what the retail store submitted to, um, DRS, Department of Revenue Services. The town of Orange would have to have an employee who would have to contact DRS, find out what the number was that was submitted to for revenue for tax. Then the town of Orange person would then have to bill that retail sales facility for what they owe the town. And then in the event that there's difficulty collecting that, which there might be, there might not be, um, there's the possibility, then you do the, every 30 days or 15 days, and if that doesn't work, then we have to pay legal counsel to, to push collection actions. So unless it's a big number, that 3% is kind of, uh, pie in the sky that they put in there to get it through, but it's, I, as I put on Facebook for these people that were talking about it, my comment started out with something along the lines of, all that glitters is not gold, and...
You should also note that the, the law limits and restricts a municipality's ability to use that money. So you cannot, that money just doesn't go to your general fund.
Oh, no.
You have to use it for specific statutory, we prescribe things.
So, so there's a lot that, more to it than, uh, what you read out there in the newspapers on that, and that's a separate thing, and that's going to zoning to deal with, with if they allow, will only be allowed one facility in, in, in the town, um, but zoning is starting their discussions on that tonight. So, uh, I just wanted to get you in the audience and people at home to understand, we're doing two different parts of it, but, but they both involve cannabis. Uh, State Representative Kennedy is here in the back of the room taking this in intently also, um, just so we know, good to see you tonight. Uh, but, so we're on the smoking on town properties part, so. Everybody here, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak now? If not, is there motion then to close the public hearing and have us hash it out? Or would you like to hash it out, continue it in an open hearing and then we have to vote, we have to come out to vote, but?
Jim, just to, to stay in the, in the public realm of it all, so it's on the record, so to speak.
Okay.
I would propose two things as, as we get back into deliberations. One is that, you know, we didn't really allow outdoor seating of restaurants until COVID. So it's still a pretty nebulous area that, that's, that's just still getting out there, and we're still, we're still experimenting with it. And I, I want to show one thing. I would, I would strongly propose that we put into this regulation that it just make it...
Very plain and simple, there's no, there's no gray area at the home.
Uh, there's no gray area that says that, um, we would, um, not allow any kind of smoking at all in an outdoor seating area of a restaurant. That would be the first thing. The second thing I'd say is, I think we can resolve the other issue fairly simply by striking the word possess in section 307 dash 2B. And that would take away the necessary, as Judy was saying, you know, pat towns. You know, look, if somebody smokes cigarettes, they may have a pack of cigarettes on them on the fairgrounds, but not partake, but they'd still be in violation if they possess. And the same thing would happen with cannabis, um, as, as well as anything else that's, uh, even a vaping device or a cigar, uh, anyway. So that would, I, I think that we just, I, I wanted to put on the public record that we, we should, we consider striking the word possess, um, under B, and then also certainly consider, uh, rewording, uh, if it goes in the chapter 307, Vinny, great. If it has to go in a different chapter, then we have to do it that way to, um, ban any kind of smoking in outdoor seating areas in restaurants. Thank you.
I agree with Mitch on the striking of the word possess. I disagree on limiting the restaurants. I think the restaurants would fall under the zoning or Department of Public Health or several other areas personally. That's only my opinion.
So let me ask you this with, with our, um, I would say the quote sectional title, where it's 307 dash 2, where it says smoking and possession of alcoholic beverages, tobacco product, um, products, cannabis, up at the top there, okay, the middle of the page? Should possession be taken out of that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so both places.
We're gonna strike, if, if the consensus is to strike possession and it will come out of the entire ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but then you're also now gonna, uh, monkey with, if you will, section A, which you did not touch at all.
That is, that is...
Is that okay? Okay. That, that's okay, it's okay, just wanna make sure we were...
I was just, I was trying to make it like alcohol.
Okay.
I didn't realize you were gonna be so liberal, so.
Thank you.
But that's fine, you're, you can, you can modify the ordinance, that's, it's your, that's your right.
Okay, anybody else's thoughts on this? Have you deliberated? Is there anybody at this time wants to speak in the room? Goddardine? You do have to come up.
It's just a really quick point.
That's all right.
I don't know if, um, if, Vin, if this covers it, but cannabis has now grown so much that it's not just smoking, but I think the, um, the drinking of it, because that's also a thing, so I just wanna make sure that that covers...
Yeah, I have, I have drinking in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's not just, it's not just rolling a joint anymore.
No, that's exactly...
Actually, I think probably the majority of people that use cannabis are not smoking it. They're using a vape pen or a edible.
We had it down as possessed drinks, smoke, burn, like consumer use.
Okay.
So...
They have adapted it to many, many uses now.
And I, I would just, for the, for the board, uh, I think the word possess in A should remain, because possess relates to the possession of an open container, which is, which is, uh...
Possess any open container.
You can possess alcohol if it's sealed, but you cannot possess an open container. That's, possess, so possession in A, when it relates to alcohol, is specific to open container.
Okay.
And the chief would be very upset if we struck that.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else? Otherwise, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded. Okay, the issue has been batted around, it has been discussed with those changes. The first one was to, uh, remove the word possess. And now Attorney Marino clarified that in one spot in, uh, 07 dash 2A, he feels the possess should stay, however, it should be removed in B. Um, there was somewhere else, Mitch, where was the other spot?
Well, no, that would, that would, that's what Vinny just said, that would be, would be problematic if you...
Right, no, what, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna modify that. It'll say smoking consumption, uh, of alcoholic beverages, uh, smoking consumption or drinking alcoholic beverages, tobacco products, cannabis products, illegal drugs, and controlled substances, and possession of open containers.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay. All right, so with those changes, that is one. I would take a vote on that first, those changes, um, as discussed. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Margaret. Now, this is for the changing of some of the language as discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That's unanimous, okay. Now, the second one is Mitch's proposal of, uh, eliminating it, adding it in, uh, that it limits the consumption of all burning products, I'm gonna call it, all cannabis products and tobacco products at restaurants, specifically, I think it was up at the outdoor dining of the restaurants. Is there any more discussion on that one, Mitchell?
Can I speak, can I speak to that? Yeah, so I guess, so I, I take it from our last vote, we've now passed this revised 307? Or we're not there yet?
The grammaticals and that.
You all agreed to strike the possess.
Right, okay, so my que- so what I like to do is, if it's appropriate, is, it probably doesn't fit into chapter 307, because it says use of public properties, the title of 307. But we did advertise the smoking of, uh, smoking of any kind of products in outdoor sections of restaurants. It brings me back, it's a little deja vu, when we, when I went to the state of Connecticut and asked for the town of Orange to have the ability to ban smoking in restaurants, and I was asked by a state legislator, why don't you just have the state ban it instead of the town of Orange? And I said, because you don't have the guts to do it. And the state of Connecticut did. They, they took that, that, people may not remember, it was maybe 20 years ago now, state of Connecticut did have the guts, because if, if they didn't, if, we, we were preempted from, from being able to ban smoking in restaurants in the town of Orange unless it was a state statute. The state did the good deed and did that. I don't think it ever would have been banned in restaurants voluntarily. Uh, now we take it for granted. Our kids never even saw anybody smoking in restaurants, uh, which is, which is exciting, and it's very helpful. My, my concern is this, that if we give it back to allowing restaurants, tavern owners to allow for smoking outside, it will happen. And it's gonna happen because there'll be a smoking section and a non-smoking section. We'll be back to the way we were inside restaurants, where people who wanna be outside for the atmosphere, wanna be outside because of COVID, wanna be outside for any reason, are going to be disturbed because there's a smoking section, and unlike inside a restaurant, there are no partitions, there are, there's no fan, um, that, that restaurants were trying to do for a while. I think it's very important, I think we set the right example for this town, uh, to ban smoking in all restaurants, whether it's indoors or outdoors, and I feel very strongly about that, and I think that was one of the reasons we're here tonight, and I think we should. If it doesn't fit in chapter 307, let's fit it in where it, where it fits, but, I'm sorry.
If, if it was the will of the body to add that, I would add it as a C, uh, under 307 dash 2, because under Senate Bill 1201, it modified the Police Powers Act, 7 dash 148, which extended the ability of the municipality to regulate within its limits, uh, the consumption of or smoking of cannabis on, in the outdoor sections of restaurants. So although the ordinance is styled as use of public property, uh, by kind of extension, Senate Bill 1201 extended the ability of a municipality to restrict on public property to extend to the outdoor section of restaurants.
All right.
So I think it, you know, we, I could style with reference to the Senate Bill, uh, in a subsection C, if you wanted to do it.
That would mean, that would, if you feel it will fit in, in chapter 307, which makes it a lot cleaner, um, I would hereby propose that we add a subsection C that would ban all smoking. It's very simple, all smoking, uh, in restaurants, indoors and outdoors, and if it just needs to mention outdoors, then fine. Thank you.
All right, um, is there a second to Selectman Goldblatt's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ralph, second that motion. Is there discussion now?
Yes, sir.
We'll start down.
All right, so, so Mitch, at this point, the state has banned smoking indoor restaurants, correct?
I understand that's correct.
Okay, so now, at this point, we're talking about 25 feet from any ventilation or doorway and stuff. That's now with the new ordinance, so that's where we're coming into that, um, thing. Could you go back to the state and ask them just to ban it for outdoor restaurants too? That would be easier?
I got a thumbs up in the back of the room.
I think, I think that when the state put that allowance in for the outdoor dining as a help for restaurants during the COVID, um, by allowing that, and then they came to zoning, just to really zoning and police to make sure that it was done properly and safely, and there were some barriers and ballards and all that sort of thing, uh, proper outdoor lighting and all, um, but I think that the smoking rule still falls under the restaurant umbrella, indoors or outdoors, um, I believe, is what I had kinda found on that. And I'll, gonna coat tail onto Mitch on that, Representative Kennedy is in the back of the room, and, um, I really think that if the state of Connecticut did the first part, that the state of Connecticut, even though they passed this ability to us to limit it on town properties, I really think that it's the state of Connecticut that should improve their rule, ordinance, law, title, however they have it listed, uh, for that, because the smoking at the restaurants is covered under the umbrella of that title, indoors and out, I believe. But now the cannabis, they passed it to us, we need to pass, and this is very common, um, uh, with rules that we receive both from state and federal. We sat in this room, uh, two months ago now, maybe, with, uh, Chris Murphy regarding the, uh, money from the federal government that they're sending to every municipality. And Chris Murphy's... And Chris Murphy's comment on that one, I'm like, Chris, you made it so tight that we can only spend this money on certain things. And he, his reply was, yeah, the money kind of came out before the rules were all done. So, you know, we have $2 million sitting that we can only use for certain COVID-related items. If we could use it for culverts, you'd have culverts. But I think the state of Connecticut has done the same thing. They kind of punted on it, but now, as it gets fleshed out, they're finding that there are, they're gonna find, I guess I should say, that there's pieces that they need to address, this being one of them. Representative, I think that that's something that needs to go back to them to be addressed.
And just, just so you're aware, under the Clean Indoor Air Act, smoking is prohibited in all restaurants. Smoking is prohibited in the outside seating of a restaurant that has a ceiling or other type of covering. Outside seating that does not have a ceiling or other type of covering must have 75% of the seat, of seating designated as smoke-free. So there, there are already some restrictions on the outdoor section of restaurants. So basically, what, what you're, you have control over is 25%.
That opens up too many doors.
So, if I, if I may.
Yes.
To answer Judy, I think, and this is just my conjecture, that when, when the governor and the legislature allowed for outdoor seating during the COVID crisis, which we've extended, everybody's enjoyed it, very much so, and, you know, I think everyone's idea of that was extension of the restaurant.
Right.
So the idea was the extension of the restaurant to allow, to not allow any smoking. I'm not sure if that's the case in all restaurants, or the ones that I've been to, it has been. But the problem is twofold. One is if we, if we allow it to go forward and say that you can have it in 25%, we have the ability to stop it altogether. If we, if we say that you can't have it in 25%, you're protecting everyone's health. And I think for the town of Orange, to protect the health of everyone, including children who go to restaurants, I think that's what we should do, number one. Number two, going back to what Vinnie said earlier, if we do nothing, things stay the same. If things stay the same, that means for that 25% of the restaurant, people could be smoking cannabis in that 25% of the restaurant. If you think that cannabis smoke or any tobacco smoke is going to stay just in the 25% of the restaurant, you're, it's, it's not, it's not going to happen. We know that. We know how, how, how smoke travels, and how, you know, people who are sensitive to smoke will, will definitely recognize it, whether it's tobacco smoke or cannabis smoke. I think it's incumbent upon us to add that section C, to, to ban all smoking in all restaurants, indoors, which is already done, and all outdoors. Thank you.
Attorney Corangelo.
Yeah, respectfully, Mitch, I completely disagree with you. You're talking about public versus private, right? You're talking about the use of the, the public fields out here, that's a different story. Let the private restaurants handle it within the state statutes that are there. If the state wants to mandate that, let the state of Connecticut do that. As it is, the restaurants have enough problems to, to, to fill their restaurants. And quite frankly, if you're scared about COVID, you're not going out to a restaurant, okay? So people sometimes don't drink alcohol, but they want to go and meet their friends at a bar. And 99% of them are respectful. They go out in the back where there's a designated area where they can smoke their cigarette, but be with their friends. I disagree with your thought process on this. I would leave it alone, let the state handle it. If they're going to mandate that, that's their issue, not ours. I don't think we should be taking that on like that. Respectfully disagree.
Say, it is ours because the state allowed us, under the ordinance, to, to deal with cannabis and all smoking in the outdoor sections of restaurants. And I don't think this town would be in, being wise to allow it, because, John, you go outside, you want to have a drink, you want to smoke somewhere else outside the restaurant, that's fine. That, that smoke, that cannabis is going to waft into other areas of the restaurant, other areas where people are smoking or, or not smoking, and trying to enjoy their meal. And I think, you know, strongly disagree that the fact is that, you know, we have the ability to do it, we, we shouldn't punt on this. The state may have punted, we shouldn't be punting on this. We should be taking action on it and protecting the health and welfare of our own residents and the people that visit those restaurants. As far as COVID goes, a lot of people are concerned about going inside restaurants, but they've been going outside restaurants. That's why, that's why the outside seating was allowed in the first place. And I think we should allow people to go outside, be able to enjoy their food without being subjected to the smoke, whatever it is. Thank you.
All right, okay. I think it's the restaurant's prerogative. If there's anybody else, otherwise, we're going to call for a vote on.
Before you do, one more thing.
Can you hear my phone?
You could. One more thing you need to amend, and I apologize, I just recognized the sitting here. Under 307-11 penalties for offenses, the ordinance presently sets a fine of not to exceed $100. Senate Bill 1201 limits your ability to fine to $50. So if anyone.
That used to be cleaned up.
So my suggestion would be that we reduce 100 down to 50, so it's consistent for everything, because when it comes to cannabis, you cannot be fined more than $50.
Okay. Everybody's in agreement on that one? I think that's, yeah. All right. A call for Mitchell has made a motion and a second, and we've had discussion, that's, everybody's good with that part? Okay. All of those in favor of supporting Mitch's request to limit all smoking in restaurants, that 25% area, outdoors is all that actually is available. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Nay. 3-3. Motion fails. Okay. With that said, we are done with those items.
Are you going to adopt the ordinance as presented?
Other motion?
Well, if, you have to decide.
So they did the two parts, that would have covered.
Right, but now, are you going to adopt the ordinance as it's presented? I don't think you've done that yet. You, you decided to strike the word possess, and you decided not to put in.
Okay, well, I thought we accepted those changes as part of it, and then the second part that was put up. Okay. So, so now we need a motion to accept the ordinance with the changes as approved in our first vote.
So moved.
Motion made in second. This is to accept the ordinance now with the changes as were voted and approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay.
I am going to excuse myself. Attorney Weaver is here with me. He's going to take over.
Okay.
I'm going to leave you in capable hands.
Okay.
Just for the board, this is Owen Weaver. He joined my firm back in January. He was born and raised in the town of Orange and came back.
Did Judy, did Judy teach you?
She did.
Oh, dork.
She did.
If she stands up and starts crying again.
I won't.
Good luck.
I won't comment when I graduated from Turkey Hills.
Um, myself, all right. Public participation. Public participation is any item that is not an agenda item, and I'm just checking here. And we allow you two minutes to speak on a, any item. Is there anybody in the audio? Well, this man's been waiting first. Is there anybody to speak on this? You have to come to the podium and put your name and address for the record. Is there a sign up sheet up there, or is it strictly? Okay. There's a sign up sheet there, so just sign on on that sheet.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Al Bucknall. I live at 439 Old Country Road, and have been there for 45 years, and appreciate your allowing us to address, address you tonight. I'm here speaking on behalf of at least seven other homeowners located on Old Country Road and Coachman's Lane, which is located, for some of you, off Treat Lane and between Old Country and Ridge Roads. So we're closer to the Milford side. I'd like to introduce a few of my neighbors who are here, who are also heavily involved, Teresa and Michael Kozak, Tom Saxa and John Alteri, and there are others. But recently, I had a discussion with the leader of the Highway Department, Don Foy, who has recommended, in addition to us, which we've been talking with the Finance Department, he suggested we come to the Board of Selectmen and get your support, since we have experienced serious flooding on a regular basis for many years. Not just the last two storms, but for many of my 45 years, I've been sweeping water from my basement. We have a stream that frequently overflows and backs up during storms and floods our garages and basements. And John Alteri and Tom Saxa have experienced two to three feet of flooding. It's even more significant than what I've had. And this, according to Don, is due to the fact that we have out of date inadequate culverts on both streets that get clogged and blocked by debris, which don't allow a throughput of water. There are only 24-inch water outlets, and they have long exceeded, according to him, the life expectancy. Many of us have tried to remedy these issues with some pumps, special drains in our driveways, and creating berms. But they have been overwhelmed too often and damage our basements and create unhealthy living conditions affecting our health, including mold. Personally, in the, after the July 9th flood, my wife had to, had such a severe cough, she was on steroids. And some of all of us have similar reactions. And in addition to talking to Don Foy, we have been seeing, and I have seen Bob Britton regularly for many years, and Bob Heiser before that. Bob has come up with a plan to engineer these culverts, which have deteriorated significantly and have, may actually fall over, which could cause the road to collapse. Old Country Road, in our last two storms, the water went over the road. We have often complained over the years to Bob, who has developed a project that, on the same stream, two streets up, Treat Lane, had this newer, more modern box culvert that allows the water go through. I personally talked to the neighbor on Treat, and he has no idea of ever being flooded, particularly since this culvert was implemented. We, I have some memos that I've distributed to the Finance Department, I don't know if that'd be appropriate for you to see, as well as pictures that show some of that flooding, which has created a disaster for us. We respectfully ask that you consider funding these, this project immediately, or use your influence with the Finance Board to support us in that endeavor. And I would close with, let us know if there's anything you'd like to see with respect to this, or even come to see on Old Country and Coachman, these culverts, and how close they are with these walls to collapsing. And I thank you for your attention. Would it be appropriate to show you the memos to Ciccarelli?
We're, we're going to have to discuss several areas, so yours is just one of several, Al. So I'll explain a little more afterwards. I know there's some other people here that, from other areas that also want to speak with similar issues. So we've heard you, and we'll let the others speak, and then we'll speak, I think, on it.
Tonight, or?
Yeah.
Okay, after?
We're going to only briefly touch on, it's not actually our thing, but I can explain a little bit probably to some of them, so yes, stay. Don't, don't leave if that's.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your attention. Thank you.
So may I, just to compound on what else, I just want to add a couple of things.
If you would like to, it's public participation. You have to come up here, sign the sheet.
So hi, thank you for the opportunity. My name's Tom Saxa. I've lived in Orange for 17 years on Old Country Road, and Al's been a great neighbor, and I want to thank Al for taking this on and doing a lot of the legwork. I think what's important to note with this is, for the 17 that years that I've been here, because of the drainage being so inadequate, what's happened is the, the brook, which is engineered, it's not a naturally occurring, about a water, it's an open storm drain, has widened, almost tripled in size. So now the volume of water that's going through an already inadequate culvert is even more. So now we're getting flooded more frequently. So it's a compounding problem that's getting worse over time. And now I have exposed roots on very large trees near my house that I'm afraid the trees are going to come over, because there's no more ground there, because it's eroded to that point. So we're losing land, and we're also having the trees be exposed. So there's a lot to this. It's a safety issue. There's a lot of standing water now that sits in there, so there's rodents that are now in there. It's not a nice situation. And I think that, I know that other people have it too, but that's something, because of the growth of this problem, over the last really decade, it's gotten so much worse. It makes this, I think, the more priority. So I just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, no, the, right there, you.
Me.
You, you had your hand, you had your hand up.
So I'm here with my neighbors as well, and we live on Brookside. And on last Thursday night, at 1:00 in the morning, we flooded. I have a 23-month-old son, okay? I called 911. They didn't help us. I had to reverse my car into my neighbor's yard, into the hill, and the fire department stood there and didn't help me. The water was six inches from coming into my house, okay, with a 23-month-old son. I got my car to safety, and then I had to go back in for my son and my dog and take one bag with a few possessions in it, because that was all I could do at that time. It was terrifying. This is a recurring problem because of the easement you put in in 1972 and the pipes that are not maintained. I walked out with my son and my dog then to get them to safety, okay? This, the flood had a current. I could have lost my son in this, okay? I held on to him and my chihuahua for dear life. It was awful. It is something nobody should ever have to live through, as this is a recurring problem on our street, which the town is aware of. I got them to safety, lost my shoes, of course, and had to walk into hotel room at 1:00 in the morning and say, hi, could you please help? Could you please look at me when I'm speaking? Okay? This is a problem, a big problem, and somebody needs to remedy this, because my son, who was 23 months old, could have been taken from me in that current because the water was up to my waist. It was terrifying. I'm a business owner in Orange. I have lost everything in my garage for my business, which I can't run now, okay? I have lost my furnace, my AC, my wow is messed up, and this is the first time. So I'm here as a last resort, asking you guys to please help us rectify this situation. I'm a mother, and I can't work now because everything from my business has been destroyed. I opened my garage door, it was bowed, and everything left, it's all in the brook across the street. My fence is destroyed. I've lost everything. So my neighbors will speak now, but I hope something can be done to rectify this situation, because in that current, it was so strong. If I lost my child, thank God I didn't. Thank God I didn't.
Who would like to speak next?
So, I think the two people that spoke before me, I don't know if the mic's on, not on, hopefully you can...
Can you just sign in, sir, when you have a chance?
Oh, yes, okay.
Everything that you've heard from them, I'm not gonna reiterate, it doesn't make sense. I mean, we feel your pain.
Could you tell me where you live, sir?
I live at 840 Glenbrook Road. So I'm on the other side of the lake. Been there five years, but I'm an Orange resident for 20 years. I used to live up off of Grassy Hill, no water problems up there. Bought a house on Glenbrook, it's never disclosed to me, no one told me there was flooding there. I bought the house, I'm pretty happy with it, except in five years, I've had three floods, three feet of water. I've lost washing machines, dryers, refrigerators, water heaters, you know, whatever's electrical down there. I feel bad for her. I watched her walk out with her son the other night. The fire department was there, and actually was able to get them to my house and shut all the electrical off in the basement, because I couldn't go down there. I've done work in my house to try to dry my property out. I mean, I've put substantial money into that, thinking, well, if the town, or the state, or whoever's ultimately accountable or responsible for this, isn't going to do something, I take matters into my own hands. But I'm tired of spending money for something I can't fix. So, we are asking some really basic questions tonight. For me, the questions are, who is responsible? And that's a pretty straightforward question, I think it should be able to be answered. Is it the resident? That has spent X amount of money here and pays taxes and loves the town of Orange, which I do. But something like this, it's just, it's gotten to the point where it's really ridiculous to turn a blind eye. And I say that, and I'm not here to point fingers, but I have had conversations with people, with the town, Bob Britton, I've sent emails and phone calls to the office of the first selectman. I know everyone's busy. However, I didn't really get any satisfaction out of those emails or those conversations. I was actually told that, it's not much we can do, because the culvert, that's the problem, it's on private property, and it's really up to them to resolve the problem. I don't know if that's true or not. We did have a conversation with the people that own that property, or allegedly own it, and it was told to me that they weren't aware that there was flooding. So, the dilemma here is back to the original question, and that is, who is ultimately responsible and accountable for what appears to be an engineering flaw? And you've got at least three-foot pipes, side by side, running under the property from Brookside to Glenbrook, dumping into a stream underneath the road, next to the Hoffman's old house, going into a culvert that has a hole this big, but basically this big. Town people have been out there, Bob Britton's been out there. It doesn't take an engineer to know that that culvert is not going to be able to handle the amount of water coming through those two, three-foot pipes, going into a single So I really just would like some answers, and if you could give me answers tonight, that would be great, or, you know, you could call me, or email me, or do whatever, however you feel it's necessary. But we would like some action. At a minimum, we'd like an answer to who's accountable and responsible for what's going on, the loss of property, the danger to a 20, 22-month-old. That, to me, and I mentioned this a while ago to Mr. Britton, you're, nothing, no one's gonna do anything until there's a loss of life. And God help you if there is, because this town will be, in legal action, up the yin yang. And I'm not saying I would do that, I'm just saying there are people here who have young children. She has grandchildren. It's a torrent, it's not a little puddle, it's not a little, it's a torrent of water that rushes in, and as soon as, excuse me, as soon as it subsides, it rushes out. Sometimes it's during the day, sometimes it's at night. And so, I would just like to know who's responsible, and ultimately, who we can work with, because I'm not trying to, we may need to do something, right? We may need to work the town, and be good residents, and maybe offer some help, anything. But so far, I feel the town has basically turned their backs on us. Ms. Laverme, she's been here, what, 30 years? 45 years. She's been flooded seven or eight times, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you, but you asked me to say a few words, and that's why. So this isn't like 100-year flood zone, this is, this is a problem. I've five years in this location, three times I've had to replace things, and three feet of water in the basement. It's just absolutely ridiculous that. It's been another year, another wet season, hurricane season's still upon us. Took me four days to clean up after, the aftermath. Mold, mold remediation, can't, you can't get these companies out right now to come to your house, you have to do it yourself. So, that's what I would like to know, who's going to help the people of the town of Orange that live in these neighborhoods? And unfortunately, maybe we picked the wrong location to live, but we didn't know that when we bought homes. And that's the reality of the situation, but I would like that answered. Who's accountable and responsible, that's a pretty simple question to answer. And then I also would like to know who I can work with going forward, to somehow get to a place where we can remediate this issue, and not have to, you know, live in fear, basically, of what it is. It's living in fear every time it rains. I'm actually thinking of closing up my garage, literally closing it up with cement, because that's where the water comes in, and it's up to the fourth step on the basement stairs. They were there to evacuate people the other night. So, please, someone help us, that's what I'm asking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. We all know it's Brookside Drive and Glenbrook Road. This has been going on almost, well, I'll say since Gloria, which was in 1985. We have been cleaning up this mess constantly. The town does not come in and say, "Okay, we'll take care of this." It is to a point where my house is encircled every single time with water, I'm sorry, with water up to the porch, the porch floor, it comes up to the porch floor. It comes down the brook, it comes, it goes nicely into the drains, and then it hits the culvert that's there. The culvert pushes it back, it comes all the way back to the brook, up over the road, up into my yard. My yard is flooded with, with everything you can think of, pails, cans, anything around gets picked up and brought into my yard. I have a 20-by-20 shed that my husband built, it's not a tin little thing, it's 20-by-20, built very well. This storm took it off its foundation and moved it five feet. It is terrible. It is very frightening. You don't know what to do and where to go. It came all the way up to the front step. Last, not this time, in 17, the fire department came, and was it 17 or 18? 18. The fire department came, and they said, "Do you want to be evacuated?" They drove down Brookside Drive, when they got to the brook, they lost the headlights. That's how high that water was. At that same storm, a car tried to go through it. It took it all the way off the road, and almost, the guy had to, I thought he was gonna be dead. I mean, it almost fell right in the brook. But nobody cares. This is what I don't understand. No matter what we say, no matter what we do, my well is contaminated every single time. The, I told you about the shed, I lost my car, because I happened to leave it in the driveway. By the time, the rains come so quickly that you don't have time to think. My husband just passed, and he usually took care of things like that. Well, he's not here anymore, and I wasn't thinking, so I lost my car. It was halfway up the door. My furnace is gone, because it comes up the road, it comes into my driveway, it comes into my garage, and I have a room behind the garage. The room behind the garage has a crawl space, it goes all the way down the crawl space. So, this time, the firemen came to get us, and I wasn't gonna go, but I did. So he asked me for my keys, because he said that he had to shut off the electricity. So he shut off the electricity, and I lost the sun pump. When I lost the sun pump, the crawl space filled with ice and ice water. So, something has to be done. I can't, we can't sell the home, how can I sell the home? No one will buy this house. I mean, I, this is a town, they allowed these homes to be built here. They allowed, they put those drains underneath the, my yard, Ashley's yard, but they're not working because of this little, little culvert. So I'm just asking that, please, somebody, please, please at least come out and look at it. It's like, no matter who we call, or what we call, we get nowhere. Something has to be done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any of the rest? Okay. Mr. Britton and Public Works and all were inundated, like many towns, with flooding problems in multiple, multiple locations. This one is one of quite a few, as all say, that Bob is dealing with. Part of the challenge there is, as water increased through development above these areas, another one where we're going to need to address is Pine Tree Drive by Peck Lane, and then where that one goes under Peck Lane, right by Peck Place School, is another one. And then it goes to Old Tavern Road before Treat Farm. That's another one. And there's several others. When you get, usually, I know we're in trouble in town, when you get three inches or more, it's being recorded for you, ma'am, you don't have to record it. When you get three inches or more in this town, in less than a three-to-four hour window, there is gonna be flooding. We know that regardless. There are areas in town that shouldn't have been built on. Where your two houses are, under the current regulations, never would be allowed, unfortunately, but back in 1960s, they were allowed. And that area there is, I can name a lot of them, but it's a filled-in wetland, and they built two houses on top of it, and the developers who put the pipes in, not the town of Orange, that was done as part of the development. Had they thought about that a little better, they either would've piped the whole thing all the way to the train trestle, which is in, by his side yard. But the way it is now, it limits it when it hits the head wall on Brookside, and you have increased rain flow from all up in the Richard, Donna area, all up in there is where that water comes from. And it comes down, and then it hits the train trestle, that's, I thought it was part your property and part Winkle's property, but it, whoever owns it. So that opening, it's not that little of an opening, but it looks small, I think that, is that a four or five-foot opening, Bob?
Yeah, it's definitely a four-foot by two-foot.
Yeah. I mean, it is good size, but when you get eight inches of rain in less than eight hours, you're gonna also have flooding. We've seen it in Orange, we've seen it all over the state. Our problem is Orange, but you did see it all over the state, you saw a state trooper lost his life in one of these torrential flooded areas. But the piece to look at first would be the train trestle opening, but it's not as small as you think, it's, you know, four or five feet wide.
Those are, I've been there, it's small. If you look at the pipes coming in under that road...
The pipes are big.
The pipes are enormous.
I, I know that, but...
That hole, it's, I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't take that...
It can't, it, when it was built, that was built in the 1800s, there wasn't that kind of water, because there was a pond where those homes are. So it wasn't picking up that kind of water back then, and the area would flood, and then it would subside, it would drain. So that trestle is the thing that needs to be addressed first, and it is on private property, but the town has the right to, you know, look at that and engineer that, and it would be at the town's expense to, you have to come to terms with the property owner, but it would be at the town's expense to do that.
We spoke to people, and they are, they're aware of it, they weren't aware that people were flooding, that's what they told us, so...
Well...
But they'd be more than happy, but they'd be more than happy to help rectify it as long as the town would pay for it, those were the...
That's what I just said, yeah.
I would love having a meeting with you and labels, and...
It actually wouldn't be me.
Or whoever's in your administration.
It would be, the town engineer would have to have it engineered, because you gotta build it back and prop it up, and, you know, all those things that go with that.
From what I'm expecting, Mr. Cilley, I, everything you said about the new development in Perfect Sense, and everybody certainly can understand, but that's, that's not helping. Telling us what the reason is...
Well, I'm telling you, but, it's my, hold on, hold on. I'm trying to tell you how the process would go, it's exactly what you want to hear, but then you're going back up to the flooding up the street. I'm telling you, the first thing that would be looked at would be that trestle opening in your side yard. That would be what would address the biggest part of that flow, because by opening that up there, it's gonna have an impact on Derby Milford Road, where it goes under Derby Milford Road. So that would have to be addressed at the same time. So that's what I'm telling you, exactly what you're asking of me, and exact, asking who's gonna be responsible for it, I just told you that part, and I just told you how it would have to go. Mr. Britton would have to have it engineered, it would have to be bid out, and then it would be potentially done, figured into the Public Works projects. It's not unheard of, but that's the process that it has to go. I don't think that that is gonna solve the whole problem, quite honestly. I think that the other part of the problem is those pipes that are under these ladies' two yards should be an open space. I think that those pipes are restricting it, and it's pretty flat right through there, which is also part of the problem. And probably an open flow with a box culvert under Brookside and Glenbrook would probably help that flow better. But the first thing that has to be looked at is the railroad flow, and then down on and then down on Derby Milford Road because you can't put so much water down there that it would then wash out potentially Derby Milford Road for that problem. For Old Country Road, um, Coachman's over there, it's a similar problem, but nowhere of the magnitude of water volume, believe it or not, that they're experiencing. Well, that's. And I understand that, but yours, yours was deep and it comes up and it goes down. That's, that's actually stubby brook because it flooded a lady on, um, Oakview who just bought a house about three months ago with a similar problem. But the situation is, you're, you had about two feet over the road. This woman who spoke here about her car and child and, uh, business belongings and all, it was up to her waist. So their flow was, it, it takes on more volume. Luckily you have some cushion areas in your area with the farm and the power lines land and all back there that is, believe it or not, some of the cushion area. Theirs, there is no absolute cushion, even though you're getting water in your houses and your basements and all, we understand it. But that one also, that one actually, um, Coachman's, I think, was on your radar, Bob, already? I believe Coachman's was already. But, but. But theirs, theirs is a much more involved project because it's dealing with a hundred and something year old opening that has not been expanded since it was probably, I don't think, built, since it was built in, I don't know, the eighteen forties, eighteen sixties? Well, the pipe can't collapse over. The head wall could collapse, but the pipe can't collapse. The pipe will still carry water unless it's blocked. Brookside, Brookside was looked at prior to the storm, but quite honestly, if you had eight inches of water in less than eight hours and all that water is coming with force down off of, again, up in Richard there, Hilltop is up above that and all. That water comes all the way down and so it's coming with force when it, when it comes down there. So, well, that's the reason there's no basements under those houses because they're built on wetlands they shouldn't have been allowed. But the rules in the sixties were different than the rules in the nineties and two thousands. So that we understand. But Mr. Britton's gonna have to look at that, I keep calling it a trestle. It's the railroad drainage way that was put in there. That's what he's gonna have to look at first. Uh, he's probably gonna have to have, um, a specialist engineer, quite honestly, in, uh, that type of construction and all to, uh, um, look at that. And then we'll have to talk with the Winkles to find out what they're amenable to. And then Derby Milford Road also has to be part of that. So that will be on his list as we, huh? Well, I can't tell you that part. It's gonna take a little bit of time. It's not gonna happen instantly, so, you know, that doesn't happen instantly. Well, he's got a. No, we spoke, we spoke in your driveway. And we spoke in your driveway.
No, we did not.
Yeah, we did.
No, you didn't speak to me because I'm divorced. You're talking about Mike that lives across the street next to the law. I live at eight forty.
Where do you live?
Eight forty, right across the street from you. And we, we could argue.
Oh, I thought that was you.
What I'm asking is, we can listen to everyone here talk about it's on his docket for a look at. He's been looking at this for how many years?
Can't answer that.
She's been complaining about this for, I don't know how many years. To sit here and listen to you guys just say that, that we're gonna look at. We're looking for a commitment. We're looking for action. I, I would ask you to stand up and speak to us that you think here you're affected. Ask you to explain to us exactly what you need to do to rectify this problem. What would you do? What would you do next? I, I just would like to know what, what the action is. I mean, I don't wanna spend more time talking to him on the phone and emails about him looking down the same street Michael looked down at the obvious problem. So I, we, it's just getting to the point where the frustration, as you can, you can see. We, we can't continue to be further like this. And we don't need eight inches.
Could we let, Bob?
All right. Go to Bob. Okay. Okay, stop now. You asked him to speak.
Actually, Mr. Zoli, I may employ him in my office because he, he did describe exactly what needs to be done, the, the, um, old stone culvert under the railroad. That's the primary problem. And I've thought the same thing that currently there's no capacity problem at Derby Milford Road because the stone, the stone culvert doesn't let a lot of water through. If we resolve that, then Derby Milford Road may be a problem, have to address that. And then the pipes that are between Brookside and Glenbrook may not be big enough. But it really doesn't make any sense to do anything else if you haven't resolved the railroad culvert. You guys have all said the same thing. We all understand that's the problem. And up until now, I've been kinda told that since it's on private property and the, I'd heard the property owners were not amenable to making any changes. But you're asking, how do I go further than I already have? And First Selectman Zoli is my boss, so if he tells me to start designing solutions, I'm, that's what I'm gonna do. Um, and then Coachman's and, um, Old Country, I think those, those were on a list from Ed Lieberman. And, um, you know, I, I think they might've already been programmed. Ralph, your, your committee has looked at them, but because of COVID, the finance board deferred some of the things. So it's not, it's, it's something we're aware of. And I, I also agree with First Selectman Zoli that, well, they're both flooding problems. The Brookside Glenbrook is more complicated. The other ones are just simply culverts under the road. Uh, you guys have a lot, a lot going on.
Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. I, I understand this is a very emotional situation for you, but what's very difficult for me is when people are talking in the back of the room, people are talking up here. Um, it makes it very difficult for us to hear and the public that wanna know about what's going on in these meetings to hear. So either you do one or two things. I know you came up and already spoke and I'm not just talking to you, ma'am, but you just. Well, no, actually I wasn't talking to you. I was talking to the woman behind you. I'm not singling anybody out. Well, we're all upset for you guys. It's a horrible situation that you're going through. Okay. Well, ma'am, I'm not in here to argue with you. I'm just trying to allow people to have an opportunity to talk without being overspoken. Okay? So if we can try to do that for the benefit of everybody, I think it'd make it easier. Thank you.
Anything else?
So the question, the question, Bob, they want to hear the answer from you is, you need to contact the engineering firm that does this type of engineering and enlist them. So you would come to us with a quote for a price and it's professional services. So you don't need to go out to bid for it. And engineer, get an engineer on it, the train trestle and, uh, evaluate what it would take to do that. And then you're gonna have to meet with the Winkles because I'm sure there's gonna be some sort of a cost impact with them as well. That's what they wanna hear you say.
Yes.
It's as simple as that.
My only concern there is that I've already been told that that's already happened, that there's already been conversations with the Winkles. You actually told them that. Um, so I don't mean on this one.
Yeah, I, that's, it's not me, so it must've been them.
No, no, I'm not saying this to you. I'm saying what's gonna change now in this conversation with the Winkles. So when I ask who's responsible, it sounds like the.
The town, the town, the town, no, the town is gonna address it though.
It sounds like he's got his task now.
Well, an engineering problem, yeah.
Exactly. However, if we don't have a sit down with the Winkles to get them to understand it, because it's not coming out of their pocket, why would we care?
No, no, no. That's gotta be part of this because it's on their property. So once an engineer is enlisted to figure out how to make this opening bigger, the Winkles are gonna be involved in that discussion because the engineer is gonna have to be able to go on their property to measure and map and all that that they do. So they're part of the conversation that the engineer and the town engineer and the Winkles are all going to have to have in order to do that. Cause they have to give, I don't know, there's probably, Owen, there's probably some sort of a law that we could go on their property anyhow, but it's not eminent domain. It's gonna be inequitable solve, not an eminent domain issue. That's gonna cost you more money if I do that. Eminent domain means you're paying them.
Yeah, no, I imagine they'd want some sort of indemnification for town officials coming on, on the land. So, you know, that's something we can, can help the town with.
Can I just, just a level set? Cause I think we're dealing with the same problem with two separate issues. Um, and I'm totally sympathetic to you guys believing, I, I know. But ours has already been kinda looked at, engineered, plans are done. We're just looking for the financing to be put towards it. Is that correct?
I don't know if there was both engineered. I know Old Country was or, uh, Coachman's was. I don't know about Old Country. Yours is a funding issue, but only as far as I'm aware for Old Country, correct? Or not Old, I keep saying Old Country, I mean Coachman's. I only remember reading Coachman's on that paper. Okay, all right. I can't answer that at this moment, but, uh, they do have, um, a funding source for capital that if they know what a cost is on it and all, they might be able to, might be able to expedite that quicker. I, I'm not the finance office, so I'm not quite sure what strings are with it. You were in talking to John. Um, if they were able to do it, the money would probably come out of their capital reserve account. But I'm, without talking to John, I'm not gonna commit him to something I'm not a hundred percent on. Um, your project would probably come out of the same funding source, at least the engineering initially to start it, depending on what is required on that one for that train opening is what I'm gonna call it, a trestle or drainage pipe or whatever title it has, but the railroad opening. So Bob is gonna have to look into that. Uh, Bob and the engineer, whoever is hired, yes. Yeah, they would, they would meet to discuss what's gonna be done because there's gonna be, they'll probably, quite honestly, that, I don't, do you own up to that trestle or close to it or something?
No, I'm across the street.
You're across the street? Okay, I thought you. Oh, okay. All right, you're the opposite, then. Now I, all right, so you're kind of, you back up to the two ladies. Now I know where you were. I thought you were the house that went up to the train trestle. Okay. Yeah, that, that backside yard of yours, I remember when they were filling that. There was an awful lot of fill went in there, in your driveway, that whole area in there. It's like Yankee Stadium. When the, when it floods. All right, I thought you were the one on the other side. Okay. So that's what they're gonna look at first and that.
I just hope to God that the Winkles understand.
No, they will. There's gonna be, there are gonna be impacts on, potential impacts, I guess I'll call it at this point, on those properties, not just the Winkle, but the clerk? Is that who owns on opposite you? Because they're gonna have to bring big machinery in there. So, I mean, I just hope they know that. So anyhow, but that, so Bob will look into that one because that requires a different, that requires a far different type of engineering than what these people have. What these people have actually is gonna be similar to what has to be done on Pine Tree Drive and Peck Lane in order to solve that flooding problem there. If Carla Birmingham was here tonight, she would be telling you, uh, very similar problems to your problems. Um, she's lost two cars in that. Uh, this time, I think she lost a furnace and, uh, washing machine, I think, what she called. So that, it's another big problem on that one. And what it is, is it's increased rain flow. There has been changes in the weather patterns. We, nobody can deny that and although some do. And, uh, overdevelopment in some areas which has contributed to it also. And so those are all things that, you know, things that were happening in nineteen sixty are certainly different than two thousand twenty-one. And so that's what they're gonna have to look at. So there you have, I think the board's general agreement that Bob will have the authority to obtain an engineer for that project and look at it. And then we'll have to find out where, what they've done as far as yours. Cause I can't speak to that, but I'll have to ask him at, at the office about that. Okay? I can't say that that train trestle thing by itself will solve your problem over there, but hopefully it'll help it. As well it should be. Quite honestly, I mean, you had two storms in what, six weeks? I mean, it's not gonna happen that fast. And I mean, the storms are coming quicker and quicker. I, I mean, you people know what I do for my other living besides this one. I, I have standing water in, uh, fields of vegetables that we don't, won't even drive through with a truck. I mean, you have to, you'll go through them with a tractor and there's water this deep where there's never standing water, never.
I mean, even if the engineer comes in and says, yeah, if we open this up downstream, it's gonna be.
Well, it will, it will be. No, no, no. Well, you heard it tonight. He's gonna have to look into a appropriate engineering firm for that. As a matter of fact, there is so much water. We have another big areas over in South Greenbrier is a huge problem and there's nothing we can do about it. Absolutely. It's sad because there's nothing we can do about that one over there. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that new bridge that was built at Derby Milford Road at Grassy Hill Road? The water was over that new bridge and that bridge was built wide open, clear span so that the water could go. The water went over that new bridge. So, and that's built higher and wider by far than what was existing there. And the water was over that new bridge. So, I mean, we're just seeing it and remember that everything we do up here affects down here, then to here, then to here, all the way to Milford, all the way to the sound. So, you know, we're passing the problem that's gonna be continuous. So, you know, we're passing the problem that's going to be continuous.
One last thing, Jim, I understand some of the other communities in Connecticut, like Greenwich, are applying for FEMA reimbursement funds, I don't know if you're.
There's, there's, there's reimbursement funds, had it washed out, we could apply for reimbursement funds to repair it, but it didn't wash out or re, put new. It didn't wash out, so it doesn't qualify.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of money promised out there, but again, like the other money I told you about, that Chris Murphy said the, the rules came out after the money. It's like, well, that's great, you know, I mean, we truly do, we have two million, two million sixty-three thousand sixteen cents, I think, because I have it posted right on the bottom of my computer, and it's dedicated for COVID-type issues. We didn't spend two million dollars on COVID-type issues, even with running our vaccination clinics and businesses and all that other stuff, but that's where that money's limited to. So what you see on TV or read in the paper, when you read the fine print, it's kind of like that three percent benefit on the tax, all that glitters is not gold. So, but he will be looking into it, so, um, if you people give him a little bit of, uh, time getting the engineers and all, I can think of one that we've used for some other projects that does a pretty good job, Cardinal has done a pretty good job for us with some other projects in the past, um, and they can start on it. So, that's all we can offer you.
Appreciate it.
Okay? Thank you. Anybody else want to chime in, or have I exhausted most of the oxygen in the room? Okay, uh, any, any other public participation items? Seeing none, then I'll go to the board. Anybody here at the, Mitchell always does, I was going to ask Margaret first, I didn't know if she had anything. Trying to be orderly, no.
Just wanted to, uh, let everyone know, because you've already heard it before, October ninth, the Saturday, October ninth, is our shredding day here at High Plains, right out in the outer loop. Uh, this year, this time though, we are going to limit people to fi, no more than five boxes at a time. Doesn't mean you can't bring more, but you have to get back in line, this way we'll.
Really?
Keep the line moving and not have people bringing in, um, truckloads and holding up everybody else. So, uh, it was voted the committee to, uh, let people come through, make sure everybody's able to pass through, because last time, the shredding truck and the ancillary truck both filled up totally by eleven-thirty, and a lot of it was due to people bringing in literally truckloads of, of shredding, uh, beyond residential. Uh, it's meant for residential, doesn't mean we won't accept it, but if you drop off five, you can go back to the end of the line to keep the line moving and not back up onto Orange Center Road, so. But, uh, please bring, you know, items for shredding, no plastic, and no plastic bags, please, uh, because with paper bags, it's easier to go through, and, uh, we all have mattress collection as well, if people have mattresses, um, that they want to bring, uh, they will be taken there, um, that same morning by the Bye Bye Mattress from the Connecticut Mattress Council, and, um, we appreciate everybody, uh, participating. Thank you, and donations to the Rotary Club, since the Rotary Club is the one sponsoring it, and then if you want a mattress picked up at your home, call seven nine five three nine oh six to Ken Lenz, and they will arrange to pick up, if they pick up at your home, it's a ten dollar donation for each mattress or box spring to the Lions Club. Thank you.
Is there anybody else at the table? I'm just making notes for myself.
I would just like to say, uh, a thank you to the town, thank you to Rocky Salperto. It was a fine concert, and, uh, the fireworks were outstanding, and, uh, I just want to say that I think there were quite a few people in town that did partake, and, uh, it was a pleasant evening, so thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else here? Otherwise I have just a few things. Um, we have an in memoriam to Bill Musco, who passed away, Bill was very involved here in town for many years, and unfortunately, he passed away since our last meeting. Um, he passed away at the Linden in Woodbridge, he was only in his early seventies, but unfortunately, due to health issues, um, he did not live a overly long life, and unfortunately, my mother, who did live a very long life, passed away this morning at ninety-one in her sleep, and I'm thankful for that. That's all.
Her wish, because you were so kind to allow her to remain at home and took care of her, and I really applaud you for that, Jim, because that was.
Wasn't easy, but we did it.
You did it, and I, I think that's awesome, and I appreciate you being here tonight. And I think the people who've had, you know, issues, I think they're very pleased that you are, so thank you.
Thank you, that's why I'm here. The Orange Country Fair, September eighteenth and nineteenth, there are some commentaries out there that it will be smaller, it will be less things, so on and so forth, this is not true. The Orange Country Fair will be the same Orange Country Fair, it will be a big and enjoyable family event as it has been for forty-plus years. Um, what was eliminated was the pickup truck pulls on Friday night, because unfortunately, and to the unhappiness of some, but it got a little bit unruly the last couple of years, and so they wanted to rein it back in and solve those problems with that. It was a lot of fun, uh, watching them break their pickup trucks that they need the next day to go to work, but it wasn't our truck, so it was okay. Uh, but the fair is the eighteenth and nineteenth, um, we look forward to seeing all of you come out to the fair, and, um, it, it's, it's a great event. Um, Ann put this out, I don't know how many people are you, are aware of it, but it is quite a problem that has come to, and they have been found in Orange, Connecticut, is the Spotted Lantern Fly, and if any of you would like to come up and take a look at this, we can put it over here by Ann where it's available, but it shows them in their different stages, they are another little son of a gun that's going to be killing a lot of trees in our area, as you see the highway department and the tree bids going out, cutting down a lot of trees along the road sides, and you probably have some in your yards, these are our new biggest problem, they have been now found, they were in Pennsylvania, they've now been found in Fairfield County, and they've now been found in Orange, Connecticut, so.
Do they like water?
I don't think they swim. Um, message from the town clerk. Property owners may sign up with IQS for fraud alert to receive, this is very interesting, for fraud alert to receive alerts whenever a document such as a deed or mortgage is recorded under your name. Go to the Town Orange website, and the link to sign up is on the town clerk's page. A man on Tyler City Road had somebody put a thirty thousand dollar mortgage against his property, who was not connected to him, was not family to him, was in no way connected to him, and they found it, for some reason, they were searching something, and there's a, his property was leaned for a thirty thousand dollar mortgage by somebody who was very technology savvy. So this is something that is becoming more common, and something that you need to look out for, and so that's what the town clerk is talking about with this, you can sign up for this, and you can check periodically, um, your records to make sure that you have not been, um, falsely leaned or attached, it's kind of important. Also regarding the town clerk, the retirement dinner on October eighth at Racebrook Country Club for Patrick B. O'Sullivan, who has been our town clerk, he's been our state representative, he was on the Board of Selectmen, uh, and many other duties he has fulfilled with us, um, his retirement party is October eighth, the tickets are seventy-five dollars, it is at Racebrook Country Club, and, uh, to purchase tickets, you can call the First Selectmen's office and speak to Ann at two oh three eight nine one four seven three seven, um, and we've already had a pretty good response to it, so we are excited about that. Not excited that Pat is retiring, but we are excited that, you know, we want a good turnout for that. Uh, Judy already touched on the concert, unfortunately, due to another one of those rain events, it had to be moved from Sunday to Monday, which did cause some conflict for some people, and, uh, while I would like to wish, um, our Jewish members and Jewish residents, uh, happy holiday, happy new year, um, they were, some were, could not participate and enjoy the concert because we moved it to Monday, which was the, uh, first night of Rosh Hashanah, and, uh, unfortunately, that did cause conflict, but, you know, when trying to plan these things, it was Labor Day weekend, we have no control over the weather lately, uh, or at all, and, uh, unfortunately conflicted with a, uh, holiday that normally, as far as I can remember, is like three weeks later, you know, I mean, at least two weeks later. So, okay, so there you go, Mitch says it's the earliest he remembers it, and he's older than me. Um, so, so with, so those are my announcements, and truly, uh, I caught myself back, so I'm good, um, but the amount of outpouring of condolences on the very first day that my mom passed is absolutely overwhelming. I think we have received over four hundred, maybe it's more than that now, um, condolences of different sorts from, uh, many, many people all over, not just in Orange, a lot of Orange, but from all over the, uh, state and the region, and, uh, she was liked by a lot of people, I, I, I don't know, but, uh, my mom lived a great life, and up until the last couple of weeks, she was really struggling, but before that, she was pretty good and on her game, and, um, just a week ago, uh, orthopedic doctor put me on this, I think Valmorin or something like that is the name of it, uh, for a tendon, an inflamed tendon problem in my knee. She took the box and was reading the box because wanted to see what was in it, that was only about eight, ten days ago. So, she led a blessed life, she worked hard, played hard, and, um, uh, we're having a very small, um, close event for her, it's, just so everybody knows, so you, I don't want you to think you're left out, but, uh, she didn't want anything, but, you know, some family, we need to do what we need to do, but thank you, everybody, for your thoughts and, uh, prayers and condolences on that. I truly, truly, for my sister and my brother and myself, appreciate that, and I'm going to stop right there. Thank you. Minutes, to consider and act upon the minutes of the public hearing regarding a massage establishment permit and regular meeting of, from August eleventh, that was the whole thing, yeah, I forgot we had that, um, thing, so were there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If there are, state page and paragraph, if not, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stay, unanimous. Item number one on a new business, oh, no wonder why he's been sitting back there waiting. Excuse me, it's his turn now? To consider and act on request to authorize the First Selectmen on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to execute the same Homeland Security Grant Program Region Two memorandum agreement, Fire, Fire Marshal Jamie Vincent.
Uh, good evening, I promise this is going to be a lot shorter than anybody else who's been here tonight, um, uh, this resolution is just to allow for the town to apply for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, which right now, we're not eligible for, um, if you look at last year's or the years prior, uh, attachment, it included a grant application, um, but because they changed some training requirements by the Emergency Management Director, um, he hasn't completed them yet, so as soon as he does, we'll be eligible to start collecting that money again.
Okay, so you're going to bring that paperwork to Ann for me?
I believe, uh, when we, when we get.
I'm sure it has it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is a motion made to empower me to sign?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second and third, I think. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stay, unanimous, thank you. Okay, to consider and act on request to approve the bid recommendation for the Stone Otis House renovation project, Bob Britton, I thought he was just here to get banged around tonight, now I see he was here for something else.
Okay, this was, uh, this project was, uh, initiated, I guess, by the Historical Society, um, they submitted a grant application, or they prepared a grant application, but the, the town actually had to submit it, um, but then we put the project out to bid, unfortunately, the bids came in higher than the estimates, um, and the, the way this grant works is you, you can't get more money out of it, um, in the current year. So what we're proposing to do is to, um, remove some of the items from the grant, but still get all the exterior work done, um, because the, you've seen the paint is peeling, and there's actually some rotted wood, and that, that's the most important, and then the other part is, uh, there's some interior areas where paint is peeling and, um, but that, that's a smaller portion of the work, it's mostly the exterior. So if you've read the memo, we're, we're proposing to pull out some of the items and, but still get the, the exterior carpentry repairs and prep and painting, and the interior, um, prep and painting done, and it will be, will just come in under the, uh, forty thousand dollars, uh, twenty thousand grand, twenty thousand from the town. The low bidder was, um, Valley Restoration, they're in Torrington, I believe, and, um, we called all their references that they gave, and they were all good, which, usually when we call references that people give, they're good, but we do that anyway. And, um, if, the last paragraph, it, the Board of Selectmen, I'm recommending we award to Valley Restoration with the reduced scope of work described in the memo, and, uh, that the Selectmen authorized the First Selectmen to execute the contract, uh, that needs to be in the minutes, we have to send that to the state as part of the grant. Any questions, and it looks like you want to speak on this as well?
I'm representing the Orange Historical Society, my name is Nina Ruckus, and I just want to thank you for considering this and supporting the exterior work for the Stone Otis House and the barn, um, thank you very much.
Bob, let me just ask you, when you're talking about, um, the items that remained in the, the grant, those are obviously the ones that are most important, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And this was, the list was gone over and discussed with, uh, several members from the Historical Society as well.
Okay, good.
We'd like to get everything done, but, uh, like, the roof is not.
Some aren't needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, you know, the roof can be done, it's not leaking now, it's not as critical.
It's not going to leak, it's a wood shingle roof, that'll last for many more, many more years, of course. They dry and they shrink and they get wet and they expand.
Make a motion that we approve Valley Restoration LLC, I'd like to make it, and not to exceed forty thousand, I know it's only a hundred fifty dollars more, but just give a little bit of cushion, uh, not to exceed forty thousand, thousand dollars for the items that have been delineated by, um, Public Works Director Bob Britton for the Stone Otis House renovation project.
Second.
Okay, any other motion made and seconded? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stay, unanimous, thank you. To consider and act on the request to approve the bid recommendation for the twenty-one, twenty-two town tree removal, uh, Mr. Britton already has that one up in front of you next. Um, as you can see there, it was quite interesting, the bids we got, and the company that got the new lowest bid here, um, is one that hasn't worked with us before, but I believe he's done some background on this rhona tree removal, and I spoke to a person who's in the, uh, tree type of business, who says they do very good work, I think there's eighty-five trees, Bob, in this bid? I forget. I think, I think, I think, well, that's all right, but I think there were eighty-five trees, some small, some large, in the bid, I thought that, uh, I had been told, and, uh, the prices just keep going down. Um, this man bid just under fifteen thousand to do the work, um. Yeah, and do the math, and it's like, oh, I mean, so, and they, Bob, did you find that they were able to back up what they said? They have the equipment and all, I've seen it on the road, so I know they have it.
Yeah, they, they haven't done municipal work yet, they've been doing private party, and I suspect that's why they bid low, they're trying to get into this field.
Well, their bid is a bonus for the Town Orange budget. Well, their bid is a bonus for the Town Orange budget, you know? I mean, they're responsible, and provided they carry all the appropriate insurance and men and equipment as required by the bid, so be it.
Is it gonna be stuff done before winter?
It's gonna be once we approve it. They can start tomorrow.
Woo-hoo! Is my tree in there?
Um, so the motion, the request is to approve rana tree, I believe, yep. Rana tree removal of Milford for $14,999, uh, for the tree bid that, uh, was compiled by the Public Works Department.
Second.
Motion made, seconds and thirds. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Stayed? Unanimous? Item number four is to consider and act on request to approve the tax refunds for the month of September in the amount of $10,598.81. Anne has gone over this list and gotten that all straightened out. Is there a motion to approve those? Okay, is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number five is to act on a request to waive medical benefits for one new town employee. Um, she wasn't on the list because she didn't work for us, so this person will only be eligible for a $500 refund first year, because it's quarter, quarterly driven. Um, so all those in favor? Or motion made, please? Thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, Pension Board.
Yes. Uh, we met, uh, this past month. Um, our returns have been excellent, you know, just in the last quarter, we had over five, 5.7%, just in the last quarter, on our, um, on our investments. And we all submit with our actuary, and the, um, Pension Board voted to reduce our, uh, interest rate projection from 6.25 to 6.00, which should put us in excellent shape going forward in the protection of our, our pension investments, and, uh, puts us in, in very, very fine shape according to our actuary and our, in, our advisor. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Okay, Mitchell, you probably will be having a special meeting, because it was supposed to be on tonight's agenda, but unfortunately, the paperwork was given to us in too tight a window for two, two, two disability pensions. Um, that will be coming to us. I know Audrey is working on gathering the information now, and it has to be approved by your board before it comes to this board. Um, so you probably...
You know what I mean.
So you'll, so, so you'll be having a special meeting with regards to that. Um, item number two is emergency management. Selectmen know, Vicki?
Thank you. Just a very quick update. Um, our COVID numbers continue to rise every week. We've had 75-plus cases since the end of July, and 75% of those cases are of unvaccinated people. This really is a pandemic of the unvaccinated, so it's just an appeal to each and every person in our town to use the power they have to stop this disease by getting vaccinated. Please talk to your friends and your neighbors if they haven't been vaccinated and convince them to, because that's the only way we're really gonna get control of this. Thank you.
Okay, and on that one, thank you, Margaret, um, there was a rumor out there that I was asked to consider funding a booster clinic, and there was another piece to it, which just flew out of my head. Um, as of this moment, moment that I sit here, I have never been asked to fund a booster clinic, and actually, there is funding if we decided to do it, because we have that COVID fund when it finally came in. So, but I would, we may not do it. We may, we gotta see what the government sets up. We have to see what Yale sets up, since they control all the medicine around us now and all. Um, but I was never asked, um, about funding it or approving it. Just, I want that clear out there, because there was rumor that I had been approached and said no, and that is absolutely unequivocally not true. Uh, Personnel Committee, we did not end up meeting because that paperwork came in too late for us to consider. So we had a meeting, uh, set up, but then it didn't happen. Um, with that said, uh, is there a motion to adjourn at 9:17? Okay, motion made, and second, we are adjourned at 9:17.